Okay, good afternoon and welcome to the Thursday, July 27th, 2023. Regular meeting of the Historic Preservation and Architectural Review Board. And we'll open the meeting by saying a pledge of allegiance to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible under God. Whoops.
It's only been a few years. My apologies to the pledge of allegiance. Okay, so the first thing is to review our minutes for the July, of the July 13th meeting. Does anyone have any changes or suggestions for my precautions? Okay, so I would like to make a motion that we accept the meetings of July 13th.
I'll second.
All in favor? Aye. There's no opposition, okay. So first up is the continuation of the public hearing. And I move that we open the public hearing. Can I get a second for that?
I'll second that.
All in favor? Okay, so 19 Lincoln, nine Lincoln Street, are there any representatives here for nine Lincoln Street? Okay, I'll make a motion that we table.
Anybody here for?
Okay, so we'll second call then. Okay, the next public hearing. I move that we close the public hearing, or I guess we tabled it.
We're going to table this to the next meeting also.
This is Redwood.
He traveled.
Okay. So I, so I guess I move that we tabled those two items for the next.
No, the first one, we're just second calling. The second, 154 Redwood Road, regarding to need a motion to table it to the next meeting, which is August 24th.
I move that we table 1454 Redwood Road till the next meeting.
I'll second that. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Okay, so our next, I'm not missing, I think it's going too fast. Old business.
Okay.
So number one is 286 Main Street. Is there anyone here to represent 286 Main Street? Right, so we need to vote, this is a resolution, right? And so we need to vote on this resolution. I'm Megan. Okay. Alright, so the resolution, I'm not gonna read the whole thing, but basically it says that although we've approved the application, it was subject to the review and inspection of Zach Studenoff, our consultant, and any other members who wanted to, to go to the house. Because the question at hand was the quality and maintaining the existing windows or replacing them. So first part was to assure that they were in good working order and/or could be rehabilitated. And the second was because their size and their design is so proportional and important to the aesthetics of the property, that they be maintained if possible. Mr. Studenoff's findings were that they are in good condition, can be maintained, and can be upgraded to include serious storms to face weather conditions. And that the building itself is a significant addition or part of the complement of buildings that are deemed historic and say. So that's the essence of the resolution. Would someone like to make a motion to adopt the resolution?
I make that motion to adopt the resolution.
Would you like to second? Michelle, I'm in second. Okay. I was looking, Megan was talking to somebody. All in? Judith made the motion and Michelle seconded. Okay.
And I, I agree.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, alright. So.
The next one, 68 Madison has tabled, requested for you guys to table till August 24th meeting.
Okay. We don't need to mo, that's their request, so we don't need to.
Oh, we do, yeah. I move that we table 68 Madison Street until August 24th.
I'll second that. All in favor? Aye. Okay, so now we're down to 280 Division Street. Is somebody here to represent 280 Division Street? Yes, you are, okay. So this is old business, but you want to refresh us?
Yes, good evening, Warren, Katie Frank from Simpson, DC. I'd like to clarify something that was said in the last meeting. The board had asked if we needed to cut down the trees on the property. And our response was that the northern part of there were trees. Now, while that was technically true, we have sent word, unannounced, to Ricardo or myself, that the applicant and arborist go to the property prior to our work on this application and identified three trees that were split, dying, or injured in the property. Those three trees were removed, along with some brush and some fallen trees. So I just wanted to clarify that, so that it's clear before I am joined here tonight by Julian, an arborist, who removed these trees, if the board has any questions.
Let me just ask you a question, because I'm a little. So the arborist recommended cutting down trees that was not on the applicant's property?
It was on the applicant's property. It was prior to the submission of this application. The arborist went to the property and identified three trees. They were dying, split, or one of, one of them was very close to the existing foundation, created a risk to the foundation.
Okay, was this the original application? This is not a modification of the application?
What we have brought here tonight is a modification based on the board's comments from the July 13th meeting.
I'm sorry.
The trees were removed prior to them submitting the first initial certificate.
That's, that's what I was going for, thank you, alright.
Yeah, just because our answer was that the tree, I just want to clarify that at the time, that was our understanding. But since then, we have words prior to the submission, the three trees were removed, and we just want to give the board that.
And, 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 but your response was right, because the question really was focused on concurrent with the submission or.
Present condition, so that was an absolute truth.
Okay, so this, this, okay, so thank you. So where are we on this? We are to review the landscaping plan, is that right?
So at the last meeting, until the July 13th meeting, the board had published comments to the application. They're ready to approve based on four changes. Those changes were changing the driveway to an open paper driveway, changing the front windows to two over two, changing the metal roof to sheer shingles, and supplying a landscaping plan that shows native species and holidaying species. Additionally, the board has discussed lowering the hedges while it was in position. We, at the board suggestion, we also included that revision in the plans.
Okay, so these, these are then, this, this is rendering of, this is the new rendering.
You did not have a re-brendery, but all of the changes are identified on the plans. I'm joined here by Ricardo, who is happy to walk me through, if you want to refresher on that.
Right, no, go ahead, sorry.
On the set of plans that you have, I'm the, then with a cloud mark, I've identified the changes that were irresponsible.
I mean, that's so good.
I can't point them out.
I have a large copy, if anybody would like.
I'm sorry, I didn't speak at a turn, but I thought we had also had some, a brief discussion about the windows. Is it, is it the re, no, on the side, on the addition, there are three windows or three doors there? And then there's like a side door?
No, I don't recall that being discussed, well, what's discussed is what you don't see in the. Which you see in the shower, it's this area here, that those windows were.
Yes, yes, I remember.
They were like, I think, nine.
Something else.
It's a bell, it's a sliding door.
Like, what we does, retract it from the way this is built.
Then there's also a fixed door, and I can. It's sort of hard to read. It's hard to read, okay, got it, got it, okay.
Sorry.
Alright.
Again, I'm probably speaking out there. If that bank of, it's, it's a large fixed glass panel, and then there are two sliding doors. This is an impact extension on the, what I guess must be the, where we had it, was at the south facade. Yeah, in the back way, that, that bank of three wide glass. How visible is that from the street? Just the drawing, unfortunately, even though the house is very close to the property, I think. Hard for you to visualize. How well you can see that.
Perhaps the rendering, which has not been updated, the, the, the 3D rendering, that will show you what's visible from the street. And, and you don't really see it, because it's far behind the fence. And this also separated by this central part. If you see on the side, man, you'll see like it's a very narrow driveway.
So I reviewed the plans earlier today, thank you for clouding around all the changes and the roof in particular. I think you went from standing metal seam to, to. On all the roofs.
Oh, even the addition?
Yes.
Even in the addition, and the, and the one-story. And we also reviewed the window style of it from the old, from.
There was two over, there was two over twos, right?
Those are two words.
Okay. So while the, while the chatting, let's look at the landscape of the plan. You want to take us to, you know, I, I can't read these things.
Can you, can you tell us about the plantings?
Here's a large, I'm much larger tree that will help you read.
I don't know what most of these are. Here we are, catnip. Grass, sounds nice. Inkberry, that's a good.
Can you take us through a guide of which of these is native and which is not?
Sure, Julian, are you still with us on Zoom?
Yes, how are, how are you doing?
Good. Cherry, can we, there he is, okay.
So what we're trying to do here is like to have a lot of like native flowering plants. So if we start with the, with like, I'm gonna go through the plant list first, and then I'll walk you through the landscape plan. The, the flowering dogwood, that's a, that's a native, and that's on the revedge list here, as well as the Alexopaca, which is the American holly, which is also indigenous to this area. And then because of all the deer that we have in Sag Harbor, especially in that area, because there's some wooded lots, we decided to use some boxwoods in front of the house, which also fits in with most of the, you know, the landscaping that we have in Sag Harbor. And some inkberry as well, which the deer don't eat and is a native. And then around the perimeter of the property, we're using privet, which you'd find, you know, almost at every house in Sag Harbor. And as far as like the perennials and the ornamental grasses, those will be all found on your native plant lists. So in the back, we really wanted to have something that would attract birds and insects, and have some food for them and nutrients, as well as help pollinate.
Okay.
Looks nice.
It does, it's nice changes.
Yeah.
So just out of curiosity, it was mentioned that, that the that the hedges are gonna be cut down in front of the house, particularly around the driveway.
Yes. I mean, on the, on the actual path drawings, on the black and white plans, it's also flowered, that we're lowering.
Right, so we're lowering to, yes, thank you.
Four feet, yeah.
Okay. So then going across, let's say, the, the front facade of the house. The hedges on the far side of the walkway, the entrance walkway hedges, are those also gonna be four feet?
On the walkway.
I don't have a.
On the driveway, on the driveway side.
The driveway side, I think you said that, that the ones on the both sides of the drive were gonna be four feet high.
Yeah, the ones in front of the house, in front of the entry area, so they create.
You mean this?
These area will be four feet.
Okay.
Yeah. And then in reality, there is Leland cycloses on this side, so we think this can be six, or we can just leave it four up to basically the 20-foot line for the property, which is how the fences are required, and then after 20 feet, we can go up to 60. So, well, I mean, if you wanted to open up this corner a little more, then you could, you can just do four feet, the first 20 feet of it.
So you're saying this fence, this and this line.
Yeah. Good.
Yeah.
Friendlier.
Yes, much friendlier. Okay. Alright, so, and it, so remind me about the other four things we talked about? That you mentioned, that you opened your presentation.
Changing the roof to the sheer shingles.
Check.
Changing the driveway to the open paper, changing the windows to two over two, with the plumbing and landscaping.
Okay. Megan, while you're there, do you have any thoughts or comments?
Um, yeah. I'm wondering if we could, if there's any documentation we could see about these trees that were removed. I'd love to see that. Also, I I'm concerned about the pool, and I'm wondering what your plans are for the pool. Is it possible to do something a little eco-friendly? You know, maybe a saltwater pool, or just something less challenging to the environment? And I just, I mean, I get the overhang of the end of the house coming down because there's an incline there. I guess I just wish that there was more like respect to the natural landscape instead of all this excavation being necessary.
So, so remind me on this, but I thought that you described the pool, again, oh, there it is. The north side of the pool would, would extend above ground level.
Yes.
And, and that, so that, because the landscape was sloping down. So, so from south to north, the pool starts probably at ground level, and then on the south side, and then by the, by the northern side, it's.
And even with the extension of the house, we are not excavating anything, that's why they, the.
Built into them.
The west side of the house is, the basement is exposed, it's not on the ground. So it's just kind of like a, but we, so that we can have some areas of flatness for our use, then we have decided to step the landscape, the, the, the grounds, so that's kind of that area before the can deliver section, we have pre-renting walls to landscape. So then, the idea was to maintain the backyard is slow, slightly, and that's why the pool, one end is exposed, and it's not on the ground. And, and it will be a, a saltwater pool. I mean, all the pools that I do recently, the last few years, everybody wants. So water, because nobody likes it, how glory feels on the skin, so.
I have a question, and I'm not sure whether I'm talking out of turn yet, so is it okay for me?
No, yeah, please.
I haven't seen the, the design for the proposed accessory structure in the far back. Is that on the first of this?
It's shown on iteration.
How big is that?
For any.
It's the cool house, the post cool house.
Yeah, it's, we'll see it on April 100 or 1100. There's also the iteration on the sides.
So let's all be on the same page with two or one, okay?
This doesn't show the.
Here it is.
Yeah, it's all the way down.
Is this where behind the pool?
Sort of half open.
Yeah, does it have?
Yeah, it's a flat roof with columns in the front, and then on the back is, let's say, like a shed, where each will have a half path and a area for, you know, like a barbecue or a storage. So then it's mostly, it's mostly like just like an open can, like flat roof canopy.
And there's plumbing there, is that, there's a bathroom?
There, there will be a half path. And then the reason why we also need to retain walls on the back of the property is because that's where most likely the sanitary system is gonna be. So in order so that we don't excavate into the existing groundwork, we're feeling that out, and kind of having the sanitary system be on that location.
And then it also looks like you're filling, leveling a little bit all the way here in the back, is that what's happening? This is sort of a.
Yeah, so that area is where kind of the sanitary system would sit. And then you see this line, that's kind of the natural gray.
Right, right.
So it shows how it's, how we are changing.
So can we see proof of these tree documents?
So, so I think what Megan is asking for is, can we have the arborist's statement of what she did? What, I don't know the gender, but the arborist's statement of what they did, when and why?
Yeah, so there was a, there was a large Norway maple that was in the center of the property that had a co-dominant stem, and it was pretty much cracking in the, in the middle of the tree. There was like, there was a crack in the middle of the tree, as well as a tremendous amount of rot. So the tree, if the tree was, let's say, on the other side of the street near the school, it would have been taken down a long time ago. The tree was, the tree was unsafe. And then there was another, there's another maple down in the bottom that had a co-dominant stem, where there started to be included bark, and also would have been called, would have been a hazard later on. There was a gorgeous walnut in the front yard, which we kept and we pruned, and we would have kept the other trees too, if they were in good health.
Thank you, so can you just provide us documentation of that?
I can say, yeah, I can write you a letter.
Thank you.
Yeah.
With kind of the, you know, the data, your findings of the data, the removal, the data.
Yeah, I have, I have some photos also of like all the rot and of like the crack in, in, along the tree, and.
That'd be good.
Yeah, I want to. Oh, good, please do.
That'd be great.
Sorry?
We're letting you share your screen.
So you can show us the photos.
Yeah.
Can you hear us, Julius?
Yeah, you can hear me.
Trust me.
You have the pictures on your computer, do you want to open them?
Let me see where they are, one second.
While you're looking for that, let me ask you a question. The architect, I complimented you on clouding in the plans, with the set of plans I'm looking at now, still shows standing scene.
Yeah, they haven't, they haven't written in yet.
That is probably an old.
Yeah, I think, yeah, that's my thing.
Something that shows all the new things that you're going to do.
Yeah.
You have a document that shows the, the new roof, the new driveway, the new window that states all that.
Okay.
Oh. Okay.
All the existing properties, so this is a tree that was in the back, and you can tell it's dead, because there are no leaves on it.
Oh.
Yes. And then there was one tree that was very close to.
I marked it on.
Here, it's right here, right next to the foundation, and so it's just a risk of cracking the foundation, so it's just.
So somewhere is a set of revised.
There it is here.
Showing all the new things.
So approval date has to be revised as of July 17th. Because this is July.
No, that's not revised, yeah.
This is not.
Alright.
This is what the architect said.
Yeah, okay. So all of these small ones are revised, or the hard ones?
And we have, there's a large version of the revised, I submitted it before, but I guess you can make it feel.
No, that's okay. You had a very big folder, so you're taking too much space, alright.
Okay, yeah, yeah, yeah. In this, eight, 201, this black, it looks like a pillar or some kind of, are these like.
Retaining wall.
And this is just like a, so you're going to essentially take the soil up from here and move it here.
So we are filling here.
This, this is the, the actual grade, right?
Yeah, so we do a little bit of fill, yeah, we do, basically, we steal from here and put it here.
Okay.
And then the same, I guess, here, so from here goes here.
So this is like a sectional view, as much as it's the facade, so this is like a section cut through that property. I'm, I'm just wondering, we were talking, does, does this retaining wall carry across the entire width of the property?
Yeah, so let me.
I mean, is the backyard being?
Yeah, no, if we go, can I, if we go to B100, and we will see, the retaining wall starts here, but here is a gray, you know, so basically, we have our, the top of the wall is a 34 feet. So we start at 34, 33, 32, 31, 30, 29, so on this end, it's a five foot retaining wall. But the reason for it is, I mean, while we could shorten it a little bit, but it's, we do need space for the sanitary system. If we don't wanna.
But I think this is what Megan, I don't want to speak to her, hi Megan, I think that's what she was talking about. You know, this is of the photography of the backyard. That it's, with carving out and constructing and retaining walls, you're creating a large, flat space to live on. Which is, I understand that, it's cool, you want to be able to walk around, but it's hard to do. You want to be able to walk around, but it's hard to visualize, when you see that in section. You put, when, when you see it, you know, in, in plan here, you can see. How extensive the reconfiguring of the backyard is. Well, in other words, it's a natural grade, you're taking advantage of that, which enables you to set your proposed addition much lower. Front, because that drops down, but then when you get down there, you're carving that backyard out such a way that you're basically creating a large, flat. Area to live on, whereas the grade actually is an hillside.
Well, his, his justification is that the flat area is really his leaching field.
You're filling that.
Right, it's really your leaching field for the, for the septic system.
Well, I mean, absent that, you wouldn't have space for a pool, you'd be putting the septic in the backyard.
Right, right.
Yeah, they're making a choice, you know, about make your plant to make the, the whole backyard, but I mean, it's a rather. Substantial. I don't know that the code. As an opinion.
I, I, I'm not familiar with the addressing that.
Yeah, I don't think so.
So, so.
Certainly not in this board.
Right.
Yeah.
Um. No, that's right, we're just having a easygoing discussion. Okay, so I'm very concerned that it, it's clear. If we vote to approve. That we're talking about the plans of July seventeen, as represented July seventeen. And that we dispose of the July third or fifth or whatever this is. So um, there, there's no co- conversation.
Do you just submit if they change it?
They change pages, yeah, well, they, 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 they have the large sense they have, surely.
It's been a new set, so we can just get rid of the old set. Oh, I think you have to change this.
No, I, I need to immediately change pages, the old ones had changed, yeah.
So we'd like a fresh set.
Well.
So there's no mistake.
We, we have one here.
Alright.
That's good, Joel.
And then this is the most, these, these small ones are the most recent.
It doesn't have all, it doesn't have everything, doesn't it?
Yeah, it has the driveway, it has the, yeah, it does, it has, it has the, the driveway. Uh, and then the, this has the.
The on my page, I'm seeing from this.
So this and this together show everything.
No, the side, yeah, it was very fantastic, it's not already.
Oh, and, and the windows.
Right.
Yeah, these two.
So everybody up here has it, but me, they got it together, so we, we have it in miniature.
Okay.
No, no, I'm not asking for it, I'm just saying, I'm just trying to get to an end here right now, I don't, I don't care whether I have it or not.
These have the latest.
I'm talking about the official record, that's all I'm concerned, because mistakes have been made.
So July thirteen should be. Mixed, so.
Well, we're gonna do that.
Yeah.
We're gonna do that right here, right now. Okay. Um.
Oh, I have a question.
Why, why thirteen, yes, Megan?
So, um, it's kind of hard to hear, so I just wanted to pick up what Zach was saying. If we're, if the excavation is necessary for the septic tank. Then does it make sense to just remove the pool? So that they have this space for the septic, septic, septic tank? Without completely devastating the natural landscape of the topography?
Let me ask you, your question in a different way. Suppose the, the. The orientation of the pool.
What it is.
Was, as opposed to, I'm gonna call it. North to south was east to west. So that it would, it would. Not influence the, the center rear of the property. Do you understand what I'm saying, Megan?
Uh, no.
So the question is, as you've seen the documents, the pool is oriented north to south, south to north, okay?
Okay.
It runs along with the length of the property. So suppose it was rotated east to west. It, it would might require less, it would require much less of this grade changing. I think.
So if they weren't building that, that would be the.
Um, where's the landscape architect, is he around? Is he still there?
May I say, well, basically, if, because I'm all in this, it would probably work for the community going for a variant, so I respectfully request that.
I, I don't have a survey in front of me, but it's a matter of the width of the property and the length of the pool, right?
Yeah, it doesn't.
I don't think it would create that much of a difference if they considered turning it, because there would still be.
It would be less, it would protrude less.
A little.
And, and um.
I understand there's probably a variance for this, but. The ARB is, you know, we're focused on the character of. How this neighborhood looks and I think by, you know, cutting into the land so drastically. It changes the entire nature and like, like people come here for the natural landscape. And if we're cutting into it and making it what we want it to be, then we're, I think we're losing. A lot of charm and attractiveness to our village.
Can the pool be seen from the street?
No.
Probably not, it sits so far down.
I see, really doubt.
I'm, I'm thinking it's.
And with that, that the actual landscape sits.
Yeah.
Awesome. I think Megan brings up a really great point, and if we were to look at the code and discover that there's really not much.
In there, right?
That, that causes a, maybe there should be.
Mm-hmm.
You know, because the landscape and the natural topography is, you know, it's a feature. We don't usually see this much. Terracing and infilling and being wall and, you know, it's, it's stuff. Suggests.
Um, I mean, that topography, that, that's not like original to what it was two hundred years ago.
Were you there?
No, but they built a school next to there and that's, that's like a something, it's all like, it's all new, new retreats, those, those trees aren't over a hundred years old. None of them. And it was a lot of bramble that was growing back there, and now we're gonna come back and plant natives. That will allow to feed birds and other animals versus back there, there was nothing.
I actually really like the revised landscape plan that you put together, um, I think it addresses what we discussed at the last meeting. Um, and I like the fact that they are native plants, so I think you did a really good job with that.
Yes, I agree.
Well, I wish you would do less to the topography, that is my. Insight towards maintaining the character of the neighborhood.
Maybe your pen's felt tip.
No. Sorry.
They would have a felt tip pen. I just want to mark up this rendering, because it, because it's, it's the July thirteenth date, thank you. Thank you, Michelle.
They're gonna be.
You guys, so.
They're trying the.
We're gonna send this out, you're gonna throw this out too.
They're gonna send, yeah.
Because, so, so we want this rendering with these hedges reduced to four feet?
Reduced to four feet and the, and the roof eh to see the shingles.
Right, okay.
So that would kind of what, how it differs.
And, and, and let's, yeah, let's do.
And the new driveway.
Wherever you have a.
The driveway is wrong to.
The driveway, yeah.
So that should just be thrown out.
Yeah, it should be. The neighbor, of, of course, are, will change, but the, the render is.
So. Should, should we exhibit a bit of caution and just say? We can review the plans and if they're complete, approve them in your absencia, next, next meeting?
Well, the plans are accurate, it's just the renderings are visually, I don't think renderings are required.
Well, okay, so again, let's, let me just go through this.
So, Mr. Lance, they have a whole set of, with all of the G, G U's right here.
That reflected on the thirteenth? July thirteenth day?
The twenty fourth, right?
With the cloud marks, it's showing that it's early July.
No, sorry, it's seventeen.
Seventeen.
Seventeen, okay. Alright, fine.
Yeah, so we have a total revised plan and a total revised landscape plan.
Yeah.
That we can approve, and so. The only, I think everyone is okay with the, with those plans, except there's some discussion of the pool.
So.
Everything else is, I think.
So let's discuss the pool. Michelle, you have any thoughts about the pool?
You know, I, I feel like, based on the layout that I've seen here, whether you keep the pool the way it is or you turn it the other way. I mean, they're, my understanding is that they're entitled to have a pool there and they can do that. Um, you know, my only concern when I looked at this was just how high that retaining wall was in the back, and now I understand. How they are resurfacing it, um, I mean, I, I, I don't feel that, based on what my understanding is of what we're doing as a board. That we can say, take a look at the school again and, and maybe not put it there, I mean, I just. I don't, I don't think that we have a, a leg to stand on by saying that. Um, I think the plans look great, I'm glad that they did address the issues that we discussed, I think it looks much more comprehensive now than it did before. Um, especially with the metal roofs, especially with the two over two windows. Um, and then most definitely with the landscape components, yeah, so. In my mind, I, I, in my mind, I feel like what you've presented is comprehensive. And that we should be able to make a decision tonight.
Okay. I agree, um, they addressed all of our concerns very well, very nicely, and. I particularly like the landscape plan with the native plants and. Uh, I gather that the pool and the backyard will not be able to be seen by anyone but the residents. So I think it's okay.
Megan, you want to have, any more comments or?
I don't know, I'm defeated, it's okay.
It's not, it's not, you're not defeated, we, we all have our different perspectives here and, and, and we share them. Um. I, I kind of agree that people have the right to enjoy the land to, to the fullest extent possible, I, I'm a big defender of property rights. Um, and I think that's not even our business, honestly, our business is, is the aesthetics and, and, and the, and the, um. So, um, I don't think there's any, personally, I, I would vote to approve if I was asked. And yeah, I will be, so uh, with that, any more comments or anything? I'll take a motion to, um, to approve the application.
I will so move.
And I will second that.
Okay, and just to add to my motion, I. That we make sure that the final documentation that's in our file is fully up to date, as we've discussed at, at noticing now.
Yeah.
Excuse me? Yeah, then, no, okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Hi, Renee.
Now, that being said, Megan, I also share your concern that we're turning into like. Malibu Bay, Malibu Beach in, in Sag Harbor, where everybody has to have a pool, I hear that.
And just as a comment, isn't, isn't it part of, isn't the natural landscape part of an aesthetic?
Yes, yes.
So our board does oversee that.
It's too late to do anything about it, but I wish there were a village ordinance against swimming pools in the village. It's too late.
Yes, I'm gonna let you decide. Okay. Didn't even call Anthony, here he is. Okay, so. Okay, so Anthony. After you set up, please identify yourself.
I just have a pool.
Hmm?
Go in.
Oh, yeah, thank you.
You can be back.
Okay.
No, I just really just brought this, because this is just gonna be an informal. Um, thing, just picking up on what we discussed at the last, last hearing. Um, so I think the main concerns here were the, um, the length and the height of the addition. Um, uh, compared to the, um, existing building, especially from Long Island Avenue. Side, so what I'm showing here are three different versions, so down here is what was presented at the last meeting, uh, two, two weeks ago. So up here are two slightly different versions of what we're working on as a provision here. Uh, basically trying to redistribute the weight of the building, uh, from the second, the addition from the second floor to the first floor bit. So what we've done is, uh, first of all, we've eliminated this connecting piece between the existing and, uh, the addition. Um, we have also shortened, uh, the additions, kind of reoriented things a little bit, uh, and it's weak for a plan to make it a little work a little more efficiently. Um, so it's been shortened this way and it's been shortened that way. Um, the other thing that we didn't mention is we distributed the weight of, of the, uh, building, kind of expanded this, uh, first floor slightly. So that what that does is bring this plane out, it creates a sort of strong horizontal, uh, break between, uh, the first and second floor of the addition there. Um, and bringing it into, into scale a little bit, um, just to give you, uh, some ideas of the heights here that we're.
Just before you get to heights, just let me ask you this, which is the version, is it the middle or the top that you're proposing?
Sort of, I'll, I'll get it, the, the differences between the, I'm giving you two different versions that we're, we're thinking of, so. You know, both, both versions obviously a- address the length issue, the other issue is the height, the relationship of the bridge of the addition to the bridge of the existing. I would propose that even in, in this version, even though the, the bridge is a little bit higher than the existing in 3D reality, you would never pick up on that fact being, uh, higher. Especially since we upgraded this much, much bigger sort of gap between the addition and the existing. If we wanted to be really dogmatic about the bridge height not being higher than the existing, the way to do that would be simply to do a flat roof on the addition, that's what I'm showing on the top. It's a little more modern direction than I think we want to go, go to, but, um, this board has certainly approved modern additions to, um. Historic houses in the past, so that, you know, that's basically where we're, uh, where we're, where we're going on this. Um, to show you briefly the, um, front elevation, and once again, this is what we originally proposed, this is the, uh, revision here, and this is the revision with the, uh, bottom roof.
I think you got this email, you're right?
Yeah.
Well, uh, you know, here are two, it's gonna just, it's just comparing with the immediate neighborhood to the, uh, to the, uh, south. Um, at any rate, you know, existing.
To the north.
North, yeah, sorry, right, uh, existing proposed with this house raised to female clients, and then up here, when this house is eventually raised to complete, uh, human clients, which it will eventually have to be. Um, it's just, well, the reality.
Only if. Only when the owner of that house decides to.
Only when the owner of that house decides to make any improvements.
Or when.
Federal government's never gonna come and say, excuse me, the chat to lift your house.
Or when the sea level goes up two or three feet.
Don't, don't get out, don't get out of kayak. What what I think, I think what we're lacking in this, it's, we're not seeing what the existing is. So so the fair, the fair comparison. To what you're proposing, isn't presumed that what you proposed at first is what the board is now going to base their thinking about. What they need to base their thinking about regardless of what you proposed is what's there. So I think in any presentation, they're gonna wanna see existing proposed.
Yeah.
And. Yeah, I'm just saying in this presentation, it's sort of, well, this is what you've seen, and so these are a little better. Well, that has no meaning whatsoever. What we're what we're dealing with initially is what's there. And then anything you propose, whether it's what you've already done, the board has discussed, or something variation on the theme. It's still based upon the existing, not on earlier iterations. And so I think this, your presentation presumes that a two-story addition, which was the big discussion. That a two-story extension and addition to this house is appropriate. In any iteration, and I would suggest that it's not. I mean, part of the problem, and it's not your client or your owner's fault, but the location of this house exaggerates. Because you've just looked at a proposed extension, which kind of disappears down the hill. And there's a discussion about can you see it or can you not, and that comes into it, because that impacts. In this case, this house is like a billboard. The entire length of it presents itself to that intersection. And that's not your fault, it's not the owner's fault, it just is what it is. And so I think that that's gonna be something you'll have to address, because what is the visual impact of what you're proposing to build? And and it's not disappearing down some long narrow lot that a lot of folks here in town are lucky enough to own. It's the way in. This one doesn't go way in. This is like the whole side of it, and so I, I'm just saying that's a big challenge for you, for them, and they may not be able to get. As big a house out of this as they would like. I mean, that being in fact, just, that's my, kind of my general take on this. I don't like how big this is. I don't mean to say it that way, that's not articulate at all. It's the the length and the height is very disproportionate to the existing house. And that's why I feel the board needs to see, well, what is that existing house? Because we're not seeing it.
Do you have an image of that house here? At the same scale?
You had it before, I think in your in your original discussion, we saw that. We saw that wall, that one-story extension off the back.
Well, this is kind of an informal discussion anyway, right? So. I mean, Zach makes some excellent points. And. As you know, the neighbor has has. Identified some of the same issues. Do we have the files available for the original application, so we at least pull them out, maybe visually look at a comparison? Thank you. Can I show you this?
Yes. So you can sort of see the problems of the original site.
So. This says it's not found, you want to get this set? Are you having a small?
Yeah.
Scale here is gonna be slightly different, but it'll show you, you know, here's the existing house. That, you know, that shed dormer. This is the existing one-story addition that's on the property property side.
So.
I mean, the. It's on the on the property line, I'm sorry.
That is the existing house, so yeah.
Yeah.
So so what would be? Opportunities to expand the grid foot, the square footage without creating such a. Massive addition. Would that be to ranch it out, make it more of a ranch?
So, you know, I mean, we're we're kind of limited.
By the lot.
Do. It gets narrower as we're back, so. I started taking it a little bit, you know, the first floor has become a little bit wider than it was. It can't really get much longer. I'm not even sure if making it longer would be the optimal way to go back to this.
And the fact is, even though it doesn't suit your needs now, this is a little house. It has been expanded in four directions already. If we picture the little, the little green monopoly style house in the middle there with the with the attic window.
What page are you on?
I'm looking at, we're looking at eight seven, which is, yeah, that's the image that that's. You've got a dormer out the front, you've got a dormer out the back, that's one and two, and then you've got the one-story extension on the back. And like all within the scope and scale of what people did over the last, you know, eight or so years. Plus the one-story extension on the back. So those are four additions to an existing. It's one of these very small Sag Harbor houses. And Anthony, you've worked on many of them, and you know how difficult it is to find more living space, so. And then the lot presents one of the biggest challenges, because it doesn't help you to disguise an addition. Which is sort of disappearing into the back into the wood somewhere. You just, you don't have that here, so. I think that the most you'll be able to do is maybe, you know, on the existing footprint, go up a bit on the back. And make sure that's quite separate from the front and go up no higher than the front and. Call today. I I don't do what you do to try to solve these problems. I just don't see that in this particular house. It's going to allow you to build that much more without taking over, and that's one of the tenets of the board. Is that the extensions, additions, et cetera, don't overwhelm what is recognized as the historical house. Big challenge. Certainly what you proposed makes it three times the size of what it is or more.
You have a lot of bulk.
Yes.
Here, is how I see it.
Yeah.
Um, and then it's disproportionate on top of that.
What if, just to give them the drawing, some ideas out here, what if the. This part of the house actually became a little bit wider, but more of a lower plate height, so it's more of a dormer kind of situation than a than a full. Second story, and that's kind of what we were trying to achieve here, which is kind of point out that first floor. But maybe if that first floor actually came out even a little bit more, which I think we have the ability to do, the. The the setbacks of the property, because that's actually the part of the wider part of the property. You know, if that could potentially come out and then potentially even bring the peak ridge down a bit.
I I think it's the, like, just looking at it, the very top one, at least, it seems like it's at the same height. It's still a little bit higher. The second one, the second version there in the middle, it's just too high. It's just too. It it's just too disproportionate, so it it definitely has to come, the height has to come down. Quite a bit to match with the existing house, and that's, there's no. Below there between the existing and the new. If that makes sense.
And what is the connection between the existing old and the new that goes up to a second story? Why does that even have to be that high? That sort of falls in online with the middle of the attic window sash. So that's like four feet above the floor. Is that some sort of a cathedral ceiling thing that's going out there?
Where, where are you talking?
The center design.
Talking about the height of this. Which kind of aligns with the middle of the attic sash. So if the floor is here, you're about four or five feet above the the second floor. What is all this space? Why is that long?
That, when you add, it's just peaked roof over the first one.
So that's like a cathedral ceiling kind of thing, yeah.
Which, you know, I mean, that doesn't necessarily need to be there.
Saying, so just the visual, like. Front, whereas now that front's sort of flowing into the back. That's just one element. Of course, the board doesn't want to design the house for you, but. You know, but those are just issues that.
What if it weren't there at all? That, that, you know, just eliminated.
I mean, it's it's.
Down to one story instead of like one and a half.
I mean, what?
That could be, this could be a one-story, I mean, a flat roof, basically, between the two pieces.
And then at the back, we're basically a replication of the front being a one and a half story.
Right.
Thing, all at the same height. I mean, all of that would scale it down. It's gonna give you a lot less floor plan, but.
So so the other thing we have to deal in, all of the renderings here, diagrams, I guess. We're eliminating an existing roof. Is this a window, is this a historic window changing into a a door?
Where, where's?
Maybe that bank of doors.
Yeah, the bank of three doors. We're replacing a window.
Yeah, that that's not, you know, the.
No, but but here, the proposed existing south elevation, there are two windows, right?
Yeah, I think currently.
So you're gonna eliminate one and put in, so.
Yes.
Right, so.
In other words, there's, there's this little one-story addition here, existing, right, with just two windows in it now. So basically this back is. Kicked up a little bit and the door there.
So understood, so my question is that, is that part of the historic?
That would have to see, my guess would be that that extension that's coming toward us is not original, but it may be an early addition. Whereas it's been going through four additions here, right? That was probably the first one. And then the roof over the main block of the house got extended from the back, and then the back wing gets stuck on. So I would say, and we could judge that perhaps by the windows that are in it might help to date it. But certainly, when you have so, I don't mean to say it. There's so little to go, and it's a very small house. So I would say that the more of it you keep unchanged, the better, because you wanna save everything you can. If if you have a much larger house, you could afford to swap a window out for a door, it would be less of an issue. I think you wanna sort of keep exactly what is there and save all of that and then add on. So that bank of that like patio door thing, yeah. And also, you, so you lifted up the pitch of that wing roof in the back. And that is also a strange. Roof line. You know, I think eventually one issue is gonna be how many roof lines are there? We've got an attic dormer, we've got a back attic dormer, we've got the main house, now there's a wing. I mean, there's, there are now like five pitches here, so that could be simplified also. I think simple.
Yeah.
Might be the.
Yeah, I I kind of, you know. I agree with you. I I kind of think the. Concept expressed in the top drawing with the flat roofs separates it, it makes it look less. Busy. And so that, I think that that's a good way to go. Zach has talked about some other things like. Maintaining the original roof line of the, you know, at the bottom there. And if you incorporate that with the with the roof lines on the top, it might be something that's a lot less, lot less mess, perceived mess. And then I I think if you do some landscaping, can you not plant trees on this property? If you do some landscaping, et cetera, et cetera?
Because of the septic system, we don't really have a lot of opportunity to do that in the, on the, on the.
Okay, so.
It's really wide.
Yeah, so so the the set of plans I handed you, the cover page had had like a. Kind of site diagram.
Yeah, so. Looking on the landscape plan, which is preliminary, but, you know, basically, we we have to set back our retaining wall three feet from the property line proposed. Septic system is pretty much filling up this whole area here, but we do have the ability to plant some trees and and such. And that sort of three feet between the property line and the. And the. And the grade. There's also sort of this sort of curious situation where the property actually extends past the curb onto the road. And it actually gives us the ability to plant, you know, a nice kind of anchor tree here in the corner, which I thought might be a nice little idea.
Yeah, I I I'll quote a famous man. Some people say that people actually plant in the right of way sometimes.
Well, in this case, it technically wouldn't be in the right of way, it would actually be on.
Well, it is, but I'm just saying the right of way, as you defined it, all around the property. You know.
So how high up is the property? This is a FEMA thing, I guess?
Yeah, so when, you know, for FEMA, it's it's going up, you know, two to two and a half feet from the existing grade.
And so the idea is to have plantings all around the front of that.
Yeah.
So the entire property is coming up?
Yeah, for the whole time.
The whole triangle is gonna be raised and then have a wall around it. Oh, my lord.
I think you said at least three and a half feet.
It's not just the house is coming up.
Yeah, I think the house is coming up, but yeah, the property is coming up, not as high as the house. The house is is being driven by FEMA. But the property is being driven by the septic system.
Oh.
So that's why that needs to, needs to come up. It doesn't have to come up quite as high as the house itself. Otherwise, yeah, I mean, otherwise we could just keep the grade where it is and and have the house elevated as you you've sometimes, sometimes see around here. But in this case, you know, we have a a septic system that we're dealing with as well, that needs to be at a certain elevation where.
Is there any way to like not have a wall that's a brick wall that's behind a tree, I mean, a whole bunch of bridges? Can it, can it, can you make it like that little slope and be like a, you know, a little, a little more natural? I mean, because you've got a pretty big triangle, it's not gonna occupy that whole thing.
I mean, I do think we could kind of.
Could just sort of slope up and be.
Bürmer a little bit. I mean, it would have to be a steep slope, because it, once again, because of the of the septic. But I don't, I don't think we necessarily need to be the entire.
I think a wall coming out of that corner would look really different.
Yeah.
Than new.
Very un-villagey.
Yeah, it's.
Really reworked, I think.
So so how mu.
Something natural.
How much of this, when you talk about the septic, is is more your your knowledge than design requirements? Because it seems to me that's an awfully large field for septic. I don't have the dimensions there.
Yeah.
But it seems to me like. One-third of it at most. I just saw one go in.
Well, I mean, what what's, what it happens is once again, because the the lower, the water table is so high, septic system can't be as deep as it normally would be.
Right, so that accounts.
But that means, yeah, and that means that even with raising the elevation, it still needs to be a. I mean, you you certainly, you you need X amount of 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 leaching pool, square, square footed drain. And you're lucky, you can do that by making it deep, but here we can't, but so we still needed a a place for that. Septic, square footage, so it has to go out, down, so that's why it takes up so much space.
Do those calculations, are those calculations based on the number of bedrooms in the in the actual house?
Yeah.
Because not every house needs a leaching pool of a certain dimension.
Yeah, but they only have.
The video leaching.
Right.
I just had one put in, and I have a one-bedroom house.
Yeah.
And I was forced to put in a four-bedroom septic system.
Yeah.
Because they will not.
Because the property would otherwise allow that.
And and that's what we have here.
That's the smallest you can get.
It's a four-bedroom system.
Oh, that's good.
Yeah, it's it's. Oh, my god.
I mean, you know, I mean, that's just.
Sure.
You know.
Okay.
All right. All right.
I said, so we're working with you, as we always do. Um, but does anybody have any more comments, Megan? Do you have any observations or comments?
Um, I mean, I agree that a lot, all three of these proposals and the elevations are just. It's just so complicated and, uh, simplicity would do this house wonders, I think. Because it's clearly been tweaked here and there over the years, um. Maybe, you know, just conceding to a smaller square footage and. Doing a long ranch, um, in the back, one story. Um, I mean, it's a beautiful house, um, I, I think. It's unfortunate because, you know, there's so many big houses on Glover Street now, um. But it's true that this one's on the corner and you're gonna see that entire addition if. I mean, even if it is one story, but it's gonna be way less. Um. Daunting, you know, and, uh, I think this property could handle that simple one story addition, but, um. Yeah, what I'm seeing in front of me is just. It's, I just don't think it's gonna work, um. And it's just so unfortunate given like, given like what they're gonna look at across the street is huge. So.
Those are properties that are more easily.
Right.
Yeah, I wish it was an old farm again.
Hi, if you don't mind, if I could chime in, I'm, I'm Jeff Miller, I'm one of the owners, um, and so I just wanna say. You know, Todd and I, before we bought the house, uh, we went and spoke with everybody at the city that we could talk to. Um, anybody in the planning, everybody, we asked what the previous complications were. What happened, um, on, you know, even we reached out to Anthony before we even bought the house, we talked to, about the previous. Uh, what had been, um, proposed and the previous time. Uh, we actually went and met with Paula, the neighbor, before we even purchased the house, and we asked kind of what were the issues. Uh, and, and what was the maximum size? It could be built on a lot of that size. Which is still under, uh, under this. We then talked with Paula about all the, uh, you know, concerns that she had. Uh, beforehand. I will just tell you, with Anthony, we've done absolutely everything that we can to, uh. To think about the integrity, both just from a visual, not from a historic standpoint, but from anybody that might drive by. Uh, knowing that we have world famous designers across the street in two different directions and people. And, and how would they look at the house? How would they view the work that we did? Uh, we looked at it from the standpoint of, of Paula who's in a house that doesn't compare to those neighbors. And the integrity of a historic house, all of the things that we wanted to do and come at it from the standpoint of. Really being able to, uh, bring integrity to this piece of property, uh, to understand the issues and the complications. And I, I have to say, it's, we're starting to feel as though, you know, we can't get to a place, it's just not gonna even make sense for us to do. Anything. You know, we knew that there would be FEMA issues, that it was in a flood zone. We talked with Anthony about, well, how do we do this? You know, we, we bought the house thinking that we could have some kind of small pool. We've given up the small pool, understanding because of all of the other things. And over and over and over, we've kind of, uh, I've made adjustments back to, now we're at a standpoint that is, is like. Does this even make sense? Uh, you know, we, we cleaned up the house, we cleaned up everything on the house that we did with it. Everything to bring as much integrity. And honestly, it feels like there's the, we, Anthony's done a lot of versions. He's gone back and forth with the zoning board and back and forth. And I have to say, it feels like we're, we're, it's, we're going backwards and that we're gonna end up not being able to even do something. And, and I have to say, it's, it's really very disappointing. First of all, this is, the, the fact that we're being considered of having. Two front, uh, uh, two fronts seems really, uh, there, there are very few, um. Uh, front facing houses on Long Island, and so that really shouldn't even be considered a front property on Long Island. And if, if you drive in any direction from Long Island and what you would be seeing from the proposed, I think we're over. We're over, uh, considering what we'll be looking at. Everything has been about keeping the integrity of the historic house there. From, from our standpoint, I understand we don't do your jobs. And do Anthony's, but I will tell you, everything that we've done is about making the board happy. The community happy, Sag Harbor happy, and our surrounding neighbors, instead of having a house that really doesn't fit in. But trying to accommodate the size of the property, the integrity of the neighborhood, and something that makes sense. Otherwise, there just comes a point where it's like. We just can't do this. Other, you know, it just doesn't make sense anymore, so. I appreciate you hearing me out.
So, so I hope you don't think that we're, we're, we're being critical of Anthony's efforts. We're trying to, is, is probably pushing the line here, collaborating with him and sharing our ideas. You picked a fine architect. I've been on the board six years now. Uh, I've seen him handle some very different, difficult situations, some houses and some, I, I don't even know how they got the lumbered out of the backyard. So, um, you made a good choice in an architect. Yeah, I'm glad that you did your due diligence, but in that due diligence, you did know that this had two front yards, right? So, so.
No, we did, sorry, we, we did, we did not know that, uh. We did not know that, but that, that just could be ignorance. Uh, it's not that it was anybody's fault that we didn't know that, it's simply. The idea of a house having two front yards, uh, was certainly not something. And I, we, they will tell you that we, we did go more than once down to the city. We actually met with, uh, we, we, they, the plans were pulled out. All kinds of discussions with, uh, multiple people down at the city before we even, uh, put in the offer on the house. To really try, because this is a big deal for us. We're, we can't buy the house across the street or any of those other houses. This is something that we bought to be able to bring our grandchildren and raise our grandchildren and, and, and have that, uh, there. Um, so, we thought we did our due diligence and, and no, I don't, everybody's been great to Anthony and I, I do know we, we. We picked the best person in Anthony, um, but it does feel as though we are. From our, from the first meetings until now, that it's gone, we've gotten less and less and less, and that we are going in reverse. And I, I'm not being critical or disparaging to anyone, by the way.
The first means with us, you think you're getting less and less and less?
Yes.
If I may, the board has an obligation to do this review and make sure that when they issue a certificate of appropriateness. That they're doing their due diligence respects reviewing the actual proposal. This is a very common give and take and. You may feel frustrated and I don't know who you've met with, but this is the actual board that has to review this for the purposes of design. Is that any, um, performance with the historic district? So they're obligated to do this review, uh.
But please know that I, that I under, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you.
So, so it's, I.
Get to you there, so I don't know who's talking, but, but.
I, I think we sympathize with you. We understand what you're saying and, and everybody up here is very experienced in, in, in this sort of situation. So you heard today, Zach stood off the consultant and the architectural consultant to help us maintain the historic village. Everybody's so charmed about, until they build, buy here and build here and they wanna be an exception to the rule, right? So, uh, we're, we're represented as a really. The federal government in maintaining the standards and, and, and the program and the limitations that they've. They've put on the historic designation, okay? So you bought a house with special responsibilities that's different than somebody in Levittown. And even there, they have an HOA to control you to death, right? What style blinds you can put in. So, uh, that's the reality. We are trying to find a way. To accommodate your program, your needs, as, as best as we can, within the confines of our limitations. So that's where we are now, and, um, there's, this, we're not dogmatic, and again, you can. Take Anthony out, and I've never had a drink together, but you guys can talk about it. I think he will say. That for the last six years that I've been on here, every person on this board, every chairperson who's cheered this board. Has, has, has been supportive because he's, he's always been responsive to what we've tried to say. We're not at the end, this is a discussion item. We're all anticipating a. A proposal that, that we, that you feel Anthony will get things going. Uh, is, is the program such that, program is never such, that nothing can be done, right? Um, so. I think that's where we are.
Can I, can I chime in, please? So I, I know these are long meetings and I don't wanna take up, uh, much of your time. Todd and I have chimed in very little o- over the course of any of the meetings that we've been in, so. Um, by me commenting and sharing my opinions, I, and, and, and all, you have to understand, that's me doing my due diligence. And it's certainly not considered a criticism of you doing your jobs, uh, that's. We understand and Anthony's made it very clear and we, we at least thought we knew what we were stepping into and. But, you know, we, we did our best to be clear on that. So it, by, by me saying. Uh, where we, our feelings and what we're hoping for and what we're, we're disappointed with or whatnot. Is, uh, it should not be taken as that, uh, I'm interfering with you doing your job, so that's not the intention. I would say that, um, that as with all rules, regulations, all the things that serve us all very well. In most aspects of our lives, uh, that there are always often special circumstances. This lot is a special circumstance. It is a highly unusual, uh, shaped lot and how it's placed and where it is. And all the buildings that have gone around it, as well as it's in a flood zone and there are FEMA requirements around it. So ju- just ask that all of those things are taken into consideration, and if we do look at everything on Long Island. There are very few front facing houses at all on Long Island, and maybe just to take that into consideration, plus all the tree covering. That exists on Long Island, so I, I, I will stop and not take up any more of your time. I appreciate you hearing me out.
Can I ask something?
Sure.
It is a, in regards to what the client or applicant needs. Is a one story addition, like simplified, um, is that off the table? Like, is that not sufficient enough?
Well, it's a great question. Uh, we, first of all, we're getting up there in age. I have no problem with there being a one story. I don't think that the, but, but a house, when the house right now is fifteen hundred or, or sixteen hundred square feet. And we're trying to go to nine hundred ish plus more, right? I don't see how that can happen on a one story house is the issue on that lot. I don't see how that's possible. So that's the issue is, is how do we have a, a four bedroom. House here on this lot, even if there's smaller bedrooms, there just becomes a capacity issue.
So, so let me ask this, this is where I was going earlier. I didn't finish my thought earlier. Can, can you put this on a survey? That would identify where that, where that field is gonna be? And, and that's what happened, you responded to, what were the comments I was making about the depth of the field, et cetera, et cetera. So, so if we could do that, maybe we could see if there's some space here. That, that we're not anticipating, because it's all theoretical.
I mean, I, you know, I think that the way this direction may be going here, Jeff, I mean, sorry if you disagree, but maybe going in the direction. That we try to really maximize our first floor space, maybe. You know, the two bigger bedrooms go on the first floor. We've already gotten bedroom, bedroom number one is spoken for. Because it's on this existing, uh, you know, one of the four bedrooms is spoken for because it's on the existing second floor of the existing house. It's fine. It's actually a nice space. Um, so the question is, I think, what does this become? If this is maybe becomes one of the smaller secondary bedrooms that doesn't need to be as tall or as wide or as fat. I mean, that might be the, uh, direction that we.
Gonna go down sideways?
Yeah, I, I think we're gonna probably wind up in a situation where we're running into some se- additional setback issues. Lock coverage issues that we weren't in when we went to the first CBA, um, so we may wind up needing to go. Back to the CBA for an amendment, um, but I think to kinda keep things, and I have to speak. To the surveyor who's also doing the septic engineer to see if there's any room there for kind of fiddling around with how that. System is laid out, you know, even though it can't be smaller, maybe it can be rearranged in such a way to get, uh, you know, really maximize our first floor. Square footage, right? The pro- program we're asking for here is not really that dramatic. I mean, you know, I mean. I've done four, four bedroom houses on eighteen hundred square feet, which is not much bigger than this. I think it's just, we're just, you know, as we keep going back to. This is a very strangely shaped property, so it's hard to make the layout work as efficiently as we would like it to.
And, and I'd just like to say something to you, I'm sorry, go ahead.
That's okay.
No, no, you go ahead.
I, I'm just wondering, because I have seen oftentimes you'll have a, a small historic house and then. There's an accessory building because you can't add on to the smaller house. That would maybe fulfill your need to have the, the more square footage. So instead of adding on to a house that's been added on to, is it, is there, does the property allow for an accessory?
Probably, you know, I, I, I understand your, your, your point, and once again, I think. The strangeness of the property means that the accessory building would actually have, I think, even more restrictive setbacks than the main house. Because we're, we're dealing with, you know, it would have to conform to the front yard setbacks and the front, there isn't.
There isn't.
Yeah, it's.
Just that I.
No, I, I, I mean, I've seen that. Like, it's, early on, we didn't talk about, was there any way to get a, a garage on this property? And it's like, no, it's just, you know, the, the setbacks just don't. Don't allow it.
So as the owner of a piece of, of near wat- wat- near waterfront piece of property. That has a water table at about four and a half feet, I understand, I empathize with you, okay? And, uh, I'm thinking about expanding, and my wife has just said, we gotta raise the house, and we have to do this, and we have to do that. And, uh, I wanna add on two more bedrooms, you know, so I, I'm with you, I, so. So we understand, and, and, uh, everybody here, uh, has had a lifelong experience in Sag Harbor. So we, we wanna be good neighbors. The whole thing is, we have limitations to respond. So this is just a brainstorming session. Um, all with the goal of accommodating to, accommodating your needs to the max- maximum extent possible. And.
Thank you, thank you.
And maintaining, and maintain the precedence we need to do. So that. Any other discussion, any other questions from the presenters? Megan, do you have any other questions?
Um, no questions, just, I'm just trying to think, like, how can we make this work? Um, like, maybe there's like a lost bedroom in, in the, at the far, far end of this one story ranch. Like, maybe we could do like a half of a second story, not a full second story, and like, maybe the grandkids could sleep in there. I don't, I don't know. I, I just, I feel for you, I, I.
Thank you, it's very sweet. Ha- has everybody had the chance to kind of, uh, be around the house recently? And just kind of see what's happening in that section of Glover and including the house that's just been redone. On the corner of the curve across from the apartments condos down there, um. Uh, that, that's, I think is for sale or something. Uh, but at the end of the day, this is a very, it's a, it's, it's, it's a tricky, uh, you know. Last thing I would think anybody in Sag Harbor wants is what's eventually a dilapidated house, which is what it was on track to being. Right? With the, the, the previous owners, it really was not in, in great shape, um, and, and all of that. I think we're trying to find that sweet spot that somebody in our economic category, which is not across the street. It can, can make something that makes sense, that's accessible, that honors. We don't want a house that doesn't honor the historic nature. That's the whole point of why we're in Sag Harbor. We got a place that my mom could walk. To the village, she's eighty, you know, eighty-two years old. All of that was for being able to have grandkids, my mom being able to walk. That's why we chose that particular place, and the integrity of Sag Harbor compared to some of the other. Uh, uh, towns and villages out there, this was very, very, very specific choice for us. And I don't wanna blame. And I don't want to blame our, you know, our ignorance being your, you know, your hassle. I apologize for that. We, we really, really wanted to work for you guys.
I'm gonna take the privilege of interrupting you now. I think we're getting back, I think we're repeating ourselves now. And, and so there's no need to. We said what we've had to say. We have a plan to go forward. We've exchanged some ideas, some things that you brought to us yourself tonight. So there's gonna be another session. This is, this is, was an informal accommodation almost. So I would, I would suggest that we process what's been said. And Anthony really is, is the focal point of that and that we, next time we talk about this, we'll see what changes to be made. I, I really, we'd really like you to look at the survey and, and I think that, that you understand why. So if you could have one prepared, it's, it's an additional investment, but probably had one done for zoning anyway.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, I, I will move that we conclude conversation on, on, on this property. Is it a full application? All right, then I'd make a motion that we tabled the application. Do I get a second?
I'll second.
All in favor? Megan, did you say aye? Okay.
I did, yeah.
You can see her over there, okay, I can't see her. Okay. So what does that leave us? I think that's it, now we're going to. Is there any here for nine Lincoln Street, to present nine Lincoln Street? Thank you, Anthony. Okay.
No show.
No show, okay. So we're going to the consent agendas. I'm sorry, all right.
I make a motion to table nine Lincoln Street.
And I second, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Now we'll get to the consent agenda items. I think I need to make a motion to open them. So I've had, so there are two items. Number one is fifty-one Division Street. I thought that that was fine. Who reviewed it with me? Megan, you reviewed it with me, right? Fifty-one Division Street.
I did look at it, yeah.
Did you have any issues with fifty-one Division Street?
Um, I didn't have any issues necessarily, but.
This is a sign on the old UPS store. And it's the same frontage, same sign frame. They want to put a, a circular oval sign in the white sign frame. They want to put one on the door, the entry door, and they want to put one, I think, on the street.
So I'm okay with it. I just was confused because I saw the sign is already up and the images we have are a black sign with white lettering. And the sign that is up is white, a white sign with black lettering. So I'm just confused. Not, I, I think they're both honestly fine. I, I just don't understand.
Yeah, I'm getting, I'm getting a little frustrated with people putting up the signs before we get a chance to approve them.
Yeah.
And, and particularly even since we're on a two-week turnaround, less than two weeks turnaround. I really, I'm really getting frustrated about that.
Yeah.
Really?
Yeah.
So I didn't have any problems with that. So I, I just want to do it separately because I do have an issue. A question about sixty Jobs Lane. So.
Sliding door.
I will, yeah. So the sliding door, so in the, in the diagrams I got on, on this one, on sixty Jobs Lane, they want to replace, first of all, I'm assuming it's not historical. So they want to replace a window with a sliding glass door. The only problem is the glass door is probably, would be about four feet above grade. It is next to a deck that could be extended or could be the, the top of a series of stairs. So that's a must, but they're not including the presentation of plans. I, I don't think it's ready. Right, so I just wanted to go on the record to say, I don't think it's ready. So I want to focus and make a motion, consent agenda number one, fifty-one Division Street, the application for a certificate of appropriateness for the proposed new signs be approved. Do I get a second?
I'll second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Now for number two, sixty Joel's Lane, who had requested of approval of an application for certificate of appropriateness for a proposed new sliding door. I think the application lacks sufficient information to indicate whether the door is gonna have, whether the other improvements that need to be made to ensure the safety of the residents within the building are not indicated on the application, should be included on any further modification. So I move that we postpone this for representation. Do I get a second?
My second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Now with that closed, Megan.
We have something on for consent agenda item and you guys have questions when you review it. You have to let me know because when you move it to the regular agenda and I could have told these people and they could have come and presented it.
Okay.
Okay. Yeah. So the so I, I'm getting ready to close the meeting. And I'd like us, we have to have a, a plan, a scheduling session to, to discuss with the attorney and with Carrie, with Liz and Carrie so that we can just schedule something. So I'm gonna move that we close the meeting of July twenty-third, July twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-three. Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
So either Judith or, or Michelle. Thank you, everybody. Megan, you staying with us, right?
Oh wait, what are we doing? We're saying right now?
We're just, we're just staying to see if we can, you, you remember, we talked about the, the, the session, the training session?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Zach is gonna give us, so we're not meeting till one, August twenty-eighth, seventh, eighth, whatever, end of August.
Uh, August twenty-four.
So that gives us a month that we could, we could decide that we wanted, we want to meet and based on Zach and, and your, and Liz's schedule. So maybe we can do that right now. Okay. Everybody, oh, my, my.
I will be gone for the month of August.
You're going up north?
Yep.
Why don't we do this then in?
September.
September.
Okay.
Not that Judith needs any, any. But, um.
But it's good to.
Yeah, it's good, okay.
And it's a truth that by September, you'll be going to a once a month.
We hope so.
Yeah.
We're doing that in August, right?
Yeah, we've only got one meeting in August and it's the twenty-fourth.
And if we keep it that late, we're gonna miss Thanksgiving, right?
With any luck.
Right.
Right. I thought you were saying the twenty-eighth to everybody.
Yeah, you, you said that the next meeting was the twenty-fourth. So when is the next meeting?
I guess we, we carry it to us. So let's, we'll stay with the twenty-fourth.
And then it would be the fourteenth would be the second Thursday of September.
Okay, September.
It won't be one on the twenty-eighth. It's just gonna be the only one in September, right?
What did you just say?
I'm gonna schedule this through email. So just because we're in a public meeting right now.
I thought, I thought you turned, we closed the meeting.
I can't, it's on Zoom.
Oh.
Right.
Oh.
Oh, okay.
All right.
All right.
We can't close the meeting and just have Megan?
Okay, we thought it'd be more efficient, I thought it'd be more efficient to start. Okay. So Megan, I guess we're gonna wave goodbye because we're gonna officially close the meeting, shut off Zoom.